Can you see that? Do you have the amount?
We do have warrants.
Compliment.
What's?
Seventy forty-four.
Hmm, no.
Okay, I'm ready when you are Javier.
I've heard when you are Javier.
Alright, let's do this. So it is now seven oh two P M. I'm gonna go ahead and call this meeting to order. And establish a farm. Commissioner Strasser reached out to me and said she's unable to attend tonight due to childcare issues. Um, roll.
Molly Angelina here. Lisa.
Calta Biana.
Calta Biana, thank you. Matthew Johnson. Dan Gritzko.
Here.
And Shannon Strasser.
Okay, so we have a farm. Uh, report on relevant actions by the town council.
Couple things to report. One of them would be with our last session. There was a move to begin a park committee. There used to be one for a long time, actually. Chair it, but uh, it's kind of a restart of that committee, but it. I wouldn't speak incorrectly to say exactly what they'll do, but they're going to, they had their first meeting, what, last Thursday night?
Yeah, no, last Friday.
Last Friday night, or Friday. And that committee will be. Formulating, it's open to people that are interested. If you're interested, Bill is, Bill Heisenman's chair. There's an interest in. Think both parks and beautification. Would that be correct Javier?
Yeah, and we had an organizational meeting last Friday, if if you give me an opportunity. Um, Brian, oh, I forgot his last name.
Highland.
Highland Chair. Uh, they have a vice chair and then I think Bill Heisen's taking minutes, but they're still gonna look through, uh, uh. They're still looking for volunteers. I can share minutes with anybody who's interested. Or um, I can, Dan or I can connect you uh, with that committee. We're always looking for volunteers, as I say.
Fantastic.
And then there was a conversation about an emergency preparedness committee, which would be headed by Ivan. And that was also talked about. I don't know why we ever did this sudden meeting.
Uh, they're looking at the ninth. But I think Melanie is gonna participate. Can they give us a time here?
No.
Alright, so we're looking at the ninth and they're working on time for likewise, they're looking for volunteers.
And there was a conversation a little bit about that one where. We already have some connection with the county, with the state. With our own police force, but this would be a town effort that kind of ties in the loose ends. And Eileen has thought, and it seems like a real good idea to have this committee. There was also some personnel matters unrelated to any, just some town issues and. I think that was it, Javier, right? That was a kind of a light meeting back then.
Yeah, it was more focused on trying to establish committees and then just general updates for town council.
So you, I think you mentioned things about personnel issues, but there's no information about it.
Uh, it was on the agenda.
Yeah, and we went into closed session, so that's why we're approaching with a little bit of discretion.
Um. Regarding the emergency preparedness committee, I heard you mention that there are county and and state. Entities involved in that, um, and so. But this is more focused for the town and and how to do things here on the more granular level, but. Is the county being looped in at the emergency services and?
Yeah, they're gonna, they're gonna loop in anybody that can loop in. And we can report more on that once they come into existence. This was first. Just actually both committees, it was denouncing they were going to exist and send them, your first meeting, I think this all of us coming up with.
So their goal was to come up with emergency parents. It's awesome.
Yes, yeah, it would be, if you think of it, maybe, maybe an example you could think of would be. Right now, because we had something. Pressing, maybe, maybe, this is just me saying this, maybe there's a time where if anybody wants to, you can give them a text that goes to the town or something. So there's things that don't exist in other structures. This would be a town focused. Time that enables a quicker response to to whatever's happening. And it's, this is coming from Ivy and I think it's a little bit of thought.
Yeah.
Recognizing an area that could be helpful to tie in that we have, we haven't done it before.
And the last agenda that I shared with planning commission includes a write-up that Ellie made on the committee with more details.
Okay, look at that thinking.
Yeah.
Okay, matters from the public. Can you?
Oh, sure, you're welcome.
I don't know one online. You can start on it.
Old business, continued discussion of comprehensive plan. Please, Kim, hello. Hey, Lincoln. I can hear you.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes.
It's audio.
Great. Okay. Well, uh, prepared a presentation as usual. So if you don't mind, I'll, I'll share my screen. It's uh, shorter than usual. Uh, because we're now starting to hit the ground to really update the report, so I have some updates on that too. Okay, so here's the agenda that I'd like to, you know, guide you through today. Re-enlarge my screen. So first, I'd like to recap and conclude the community engagement activities. Um, there are. A few loose ends that we need to follow up on, in my opinion, uh, but would really like to get your guidance. Um, and I'd like to also update you on the last two events that we've had, the two focus groups. Then uh, recap a presentation that Javier and I made at a local conference at U V A. Uh, about our engagement. We got some very positive feedback. Then uh, number three agenda for a joint session with the community meeting. Uh, we had talked uh, previously about having this recap meeting about what we've heard. So I'd like to talk about some dates on how we can organize this meeting. And number four, uh, remaining works scheduling basically. Uh, then a discussion on some texts and how, how I've shared some text, um, how we can get feedback collaboratively. And then lastly, next steps. Okay, so I'll, I'll just keep rolling. Okay. So recapping uh, the community engagement activities. So these are the uh, four workshops we've had. Retaining character, fostering stewardship, enabling growth. We also uh, met with the business community. And then more recently, we've had uh, two focus groups, the walkability focus group and the housing focus group. So just to uh, remind everyone that um, the workshops were more of an open-ended discussion. I prepared some slides, uh, briefed uh, those that were new to the process about the comp plan. And really, I only gave a comp plan overview at the first few meetings. A- after that, we had a lot of uh, frequent flyers at our events. But uh, it was helpful, in my opinion, to to get everyone on the same page. Um, from the community. And uh, for the focus groups, the focus groups were more focused. Um, we had some more targeted uh, questions and for walkability, we had an activity. And for housing, uh, we talked briefly about the um, different personalities or personas. That we could engage with uh, and talk about housing with the general community, what types of stakeholders need, what types of housing, yeah. So I'll just keep rolling. Uh, here's the walkability focus group and you, um. Ms. Caltabiano was the scribe for this event and and I think she gets the golden star. You can see her diagram on the right-hand side. Of the page, uh, you can also see the piece of paper that's still in the the town council chambers, of course. But basically, this was held on a Saturday and in my opinion, this was really the, the highlight of the peak of all of our engagement events. We had quite a diverse um, stakeholder group that showed up and a lot of different ideas. Um, basically, Ms. Caltabiano had this awesome uh, idea to really create this diagram that's shown on the right-hand side, uh. Really looking at infrastructure and community connections and and where is that sweet spot right between? Um, I think one important stakeholder that came was Ed uh, from uh, Yancey Community Center. And he also was employed uh, for the county. But he was, for instance, talking about the rail to trail connection that potentially could happen from Yancey to Scottsville. And I, for instance, was recently looking at a county email and the county is also talking about rail to trail uh, through Yancey. They did not specifically mention about from Yancey to Scottsville, but they're more, looking more westward. But uh, if this was a priority, we could bring this into a, a larger discussion through the comp plan. Of course, this is a long-term uh, goal. Uh, rail to trail and other trails in the, in the area have been. Mentioned in previous comp plans for a long time. But I think this is something to, to bring the ideas together and and put them on paper. Um. You know, also, we talked a lot about sidewalks. We did the engagement events with the uh, yellow stickers. Everyone put a yellow sticker where they're from. Uh, where's, where's their residence in either the surrounding area or in the uh, town boundary. But the other event tied with that was put a sticker, uh, a green sticker where you think um. You know, walkability is, is really good and helpful, or a red sticker where it needs, it needs assistance or improvement. So I know uh. Ms. Angelina, for instance, you, you did, you put in a lot of stickers, so that was, that was great. Um, but basically, what I heard was that uh, there's a tremendous. Uh, will of the community to have. Improved trails and investment in trails in the northeast of town, whether this be. To uh, maintain and improve the trails in the Van Cleve Nature Preserve. Or to expand the possibility of, of communal trails or easements. In uh, some other large pieces of land, for instance, southern development land. Um, so. That was really a consensus point. Uh, we heard that the connection from uptown to downtown really could still be uh, another priority. And we started to hear some, some somewhat new information, um, at least in this comp plan revision about the uh. East Village or the, the, the river area, that the walkability in the Fluvana part of town. Really needs to be improved, especially along highway, highway six. So that's kind of a new area. And we also heard that downtown, uh, even though we have pretty darn good sidewalks, uh, that crossing uh. Valley Street is a challenge for some folks. Uh, whether it be accessibility or just normal, uh, people that want to cross from one side to the other, could the curb cuts be pushed out? Could the town do some work there? So these are kind of the, the highlight areas that we could include in the. Uh, walkability plan, but also tied to the transport plan that we need to submit to V dot. Just let them know that these are priorities for the town, together with other infrastructure highlights, for instance, Route twenty and James River Road and so on and so forth. Anything else, uh, Ms. Angelina or, um, Caltabiano that, that you'd like to add from these discussions that you're at?
One thing that, um. Well, two things. One, there needs to be stuff for people to walk to, so we need to keep in mind that, um. You know, continued growth of our retail and, um, you know. Destinations in town is important for walkability also. But also, it's not always feasible to build sidewalks. We simply don't have the money to build all the sidewalks that we may want to build, but. Focusing on trails and. Like you'd mentioned, um. Southern and the Van Cleve and making those trails something that get used more often could be uh, another option, another avenue to the sea.
Yes, and I'll just add that. At the housing focus group, we had a couple. Attend, and not only did uh, the lady talk about a lot of housing, which they also talked about walkability and they, their, their property is halfway in Fluvana County and halfway in town. And they back up to a lot of greenery, um. And they are equestrian, um, focused. They, they have a horses, I guess. And uh, they were really advocating for consideration of a theme for the trails, whether it be equestrian or something else. Uh, and we've heard from Virginia Housing that, for instance, Charles City has developed a theme around their trails and it's been super successful around dirt bikes. And I wouldn't wanna say dirt bikes is the right thing for, for Scottsville. I wouldn't wanna say uh, equestrian uh, horse trails are the right thing either. But what we could write in the comp plan is maybe the town wants to consider a theme because they, these trails are a tremendous asset and the greenery, of course. So this could be something that we could really leverage.
Hey, Lincoln, uh, just a question for you. Uh, first of all, it encourages me a lot to hear. Of the interest in this, given I spent six or eight years really focusing on this and it's. Something that my own statement is there at the moment, but is there a couple of things from? The conversations that kind of jumped to the top of that list? And what I mean by that is, you know, when we got an access or a piece of land or walk a, a certain trail or whatever. Is there a couple of things that people talked about that seem to be? There was agreement on these one or two particular projects in terms of walkability or just more generic, generic?
Well, one really simple thing that jumped out to me was uh, the need for improved signage. And I've heard this on several things around town, for instance, for parking. There's not really a lack of parking downtown, but. Um, just some simple signage you could direct tourists that, hey, there is actually a, a lot of parking behind. Uh, Victory Hall, for instance, that's owned by the town, it's free, just go park there and it's a short walk to Baines, for instance. So signage was mentioned in the parking sense, but it was also mentioned in terms of trails and directing people where these trails start. I know we have some kiosks. But uh, I think the town could really look at a wayfinding as a really simple and relatively inexpensive improvement.
You know, you know, Lincoln, in fact, that's really helpful because. We tried years ago, various signage things didn't work out uh, with different grants, but it's a good reminder that that's. People who are looking at it again recognize that need. So in other words, that is a good. Thought to, to put in, whether it's. Directional from, you know, twenty or six or wherever, or uptown, downtown, the other one is. We did some work on the trails themselves, but there's, it's, I think the external stuff is really, is it more, what you're saying, more external people knowing about how to get to the park or how to get to the trail end?
Yes, that, that's what I've been hearing through the different various events, you know. So just like parking, it, the solution is not to. Find more parking or build more parking. It might just be directing people to find what available parking there is nearby. And just like the trails. Uh. Could the, the entrances be better designated? And maybe we're not talking only about physical signs. Maybe, uh, you know, now that Google Maps is probably the most common tool. Maybe the town could just uh, spend a little time on updating information in Google Maps to.
Do you, and in fact, Lincoln, it's kind of funny you say that. Do you happen to know related to Google? Even to this day, I don't think they show our lake. I think, speaking of Google, um. Do, do you know how that's done? I know, I know, for example, the designation when we changed the name Scottville Lake many years ago, it takes. Many years and many different agencies. Sweet owning a name and using it and then finally gets on various maps, but to my knowledge, I don't think that's still there yet. I think the Google. I think there's a blank on the, on the lake itself.
Well, for actually, for one of my classes, we've been talking about African-American uh, colonies or communities. And these are typically around Virginia or other places in America, they're, they're unincorporated. But what they wanna do, because they will have a lot of diaspora or fa- previous family members wanna come back, they wanna put their unincorporated towns on the map, on Google map. So this is not uncommon that. A somewhat unnamed place needs to name itself. Uh, so I think this is worth investigating. I'm kind of interested. So maybe Javier, you and I can uh, you know, do a little. Google searching on how do we do this? I think it'd be fun.
I think it'd be interesting.
Sorry, my media light is turned off. I'm just waving my hands. Okay, motion sensors activated. I'm here at the architecture school.
Did you have any more thoughts on that walkability? I remember you wrote that.
Yes, I was, um. More thoughts that we should bring to the table about it or?
Lake highlights that stood out.
I really honestly can't think of more than what's already been discussed, but um. I thought it was a good. You know, look at it, but I don't know that we have any action items that are. Something that we can do. I think everything just requires money and volunteers. Does the state have, um, any kind of? Uh, structure for having signs done? Cause don't you feel like the whole state has pretty much the same types of signage?
So depending on what it is, there's, there's uh, looking at this last week, I forgot the afternoon. So definitely it's the state, but like you have some tourism, some boat, some uh. Wildlife, some categories that like you're thinking about, or the ones that people pay to say, you know, half a mile over there, best type of gas station. Some of those are available to us, but then some of them, I think we would have to go out of pocket for, so.
Well, I think we might as well look into what we could, you know, add coming to us, but um. Yeah, I mean, something is better than nothing, so that would be really good, yeah.
So for example, D W R in the next few years will not start be putting up signs for wildlife, for example. So you, there's a D W R sign across the street and then one pointing towards Scottville Landing. Uh, but then you could get one for uh, sometimes community centers. Uh, but for example, Boys and Girls Club doesn't qualify. You could get one for maybe for like, a sign towards Janecity Town and then. There's a different conversation, like you're saying, uh. Uh, Lisa, like uh. Do we wanna promote businesses? What can we bring in? Uh. You still pay in charge for those types of signs also, so it's just what kind of, what kind of city you want, I guess.
And then moving into that, I mean, all of this could be maybe brought to the chamber for participation. I mean, it's gonna benefit the businesses. I don't know. If that would be asking for too much from them, but. Kind of looking for partnerships and affiliations and things of that nature that we can work with to. To get these signs.
Do you attend the business roundtable? I can't remember who attended. We had a business roundtable that Lincoln will go over. You, you hit the nail on the head. Uh, they were, during our business roundtable.
Okay.
It was discussed more collaboration, uh, more signage, uh. What can the chamber, what can the town do, what can local businesses do?
Yeah, cause if we're talking about, you know, mutual benefit, I think that's something that we could get people. You know, we're all in it together, you know, I think that that's gonna be something, uh, if we can come up with concrete action items. That's the big thing is, you know, we, we come up with a lot of really good ideas, it's just kind of implementing them and, and making it happen. Um, so.
And in terms of action items, uh, on the left-hand image, uh, we did talk about, uh, maybe the town, uh. Could create a, a list of its existing easements that, um, that doesn't seem to exist in, in one document anyway. And you know, the state of Virginia does have a lot of programs that encourage landowners to provide an easement, so. Even this couple that, for instance, came to the housing uh, focus group and they have a lot of trees and land that back up to uh. Southern land, you know. As long as we write. A goal of having, you know, encouraging easements into the comp plan, I think people reading the, the comp plan, especially developers, might pick up on that and want to uh, make proposals. So that, this could be an interesting or useful uh, language to include, yeah.
And this would go towards walkability?
Or trails, like, for instance, if a developer wanted to uh. Give an easement for a lot of. You know, strips of land or land that is really difficult for them to build upon. Um, and then they might. Propose or proffer to uh, provide that and then it, you know, in terms of density might be increased on other parcels of land, you know. For instance, yeah. So this is one of those elements that can enable uh, different types of S U Ps and so on and so forth that, that could uh, be interesting for the town, yeah.
When when just just to put it in reference, when we went a while back and got what we call New Creek Trail easement, it took like three years. It was a long process. Cause it went over three pieces of land that even though Dr. Kurt owned it is a long process to do. So anyways, coming back to this. I think it's a good idea. Lincoln, if you see anything that. Jumps out at you, what we should be asking for like that, that was one that jumped out at the people that we just took a process to do it. If there's some that. Either are evident from. Previous discussions or from this meeting or other meetings that you see that you should look for, let us know.
Sure. Okay, so this is walkability. And again, this was really, I think, the highlight of engagement. This is where we kind of peaked. Uh when we got to to housing. This is what we learned from housing um. And again, not as many people showed up. Uh Mayor was there, uh Ms. Heinz was there. Um uh Lisa, you were this scribe again, I believe, uh. And we had a couple that that came. Uh I think this might be a good sign in a way that a lot of the our finger flyers uh didn't come because maybe they felt that. They had already been heard or they trusted the other folks that would probably come to to provide good inputs um. Uh and uh also just add Mr., I think Holt came a little bit later on this one too. But um yeah, generally it was it was a a good discussion because um we didn't really know that is uh really a housing expert lives partially in town. This lady named uh Kim Highland. And she is Executive Director of the Flavana Dash Louisa County Housing Foundation. So they work in Flavana and Louisa and, you know, they were actually pretty much on our radar a couple of months ago, but. We we just didn't quite reach out to them, so it's it's just awesome that she came. But you can kind of see some of the ideas uh that that are written down. Um. She really focused a lot on, for instance, environmental concerns. Uh if. Housing is developed in the northeast uh portion of town, you know, how is this gonna affect this? For for instance, the Soil Conservation District. We have the typical DEQ requirements, but what what are some other steps that the town could take to protect the streams and so so forth? Yeah. Um she talked a lot about federal grants uh. And state grants um. You know, she's just a wealth of knowledge and I think. We should continue to engage with her uh for, you know, additional information that might be needed. Um. She did subsequent to that meeting provide us with the uh the uh. Regional AMI chart. So basically. Housing uh affordability is is judged based on region. So as I think we previously discussed. Scottsville is lumped together with Charlottesville, so um they give us one. Housing affordability number. So we all know that living in Scottsville or in the rural area around Scottsville. Costs differently than living in Charlottesville or in Flavana County, for instance. So um that's why Scottsville will maybe be at a disadvantage because it. Looks like uh you have to earn more to 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 live here, but. Um basically speaking, you know, Javier and I were recapping uh earlier today and. You know, housing is a challenging topic. People don't really need to talk about it until they need housing. So that's maybe another reason people did not engage as much at the focus group or come to the focus group. Uh but overall, I think my takeaway is that. Scottsville really needs a broad range of housing choices. We don't really specifically need one type of housing. Uh and from our survey, we found out that people aren't aren't looking for mansions. They're looking for affordable, you know. Two to three bedrooms at at most uh standalone homes. But we also need to incorporate rental housing, so so forth. Um. Javier and I were, we had a a meeting scheduled with a developer uh. Last week and um. Basically, this developer uh is, you know, is looking at providing potentially rental housing uh in town um. Near the gas station, the new gas station. So um yeah, they're they're really willing to listen to different types of needs of the community and. And see how their business model can fit the needs because it's all about supply and demand, yeah. So I think we can write in the the data that we got from the survey. Into the comp plan, uh basically the the needs uh that the community is looking for. And um. You know, we can really advocate for housing choices. I think that's. The main aspect that we can focus on. Any other thoughts from those that attended or Javier?
Yeah, I I would say that I. Was slightly surprised at the lack of turnout because it has been such a. Hot button issue. And I don't want us to be lulled into a false sense of security that the town is is comfortable. Um with housing, whatever. Comes before us, but um and so I would have liked to have a little bit more input about. How to balance that. Infrastructure and density, they go hand in hand, right? How to balance that with? What the folks in the community want to see. So I I really kind of wanted to hear more opinions and more feedback, but. I think as a a body and with town council, we're. We're definitely making progress moving forward on what we're looking for and I think it was supported in that group. What what we all agree on, but that's because Ms. Highland. Is somebody who's focused on affordable housing, so she kind of is aligned with at least. Some of our thoughts.
I have that be, I have another question about the affordable housing. It really, there really is a disparity between the incomes with in Charlottesville and Scottsville. Is is there an avenue for making a change to that? Or, you know, we're wanting to join with. Charlottesville for certain, you know, Alamo County assets and things like that, but. I I really think that should be rethought. Is that a possibility? I don't know what the the structure of that is, so I'm kind of outside the.
Well, typically, these these figures are are calculated at the federal level or at the state level. And uh. This is just a a regional uh calculation. But I think what's unique about uh Kim Highland's organization is they are really movers and shakers in the nonprofit world and they know. What grants? Can leverage what for the community? And yeah, they don't work in uh Alamo County, but you know, the great thing about Scottsville is it's in two counties um. But if if the town could leverage an organization such as Kim's organization. Uh in Alamo or or Flavana, I think that's what the town really needs because. The town just doesn't have that capacity to have a full-time housing expert on staff. Um that's just the reality of situation and it doesn't need a ha- full-time housing expert, uh no. Uh but it maybe it's all about really building better connections with Piedmont Housing uh Alliance. Or organizations such as that.
Yeah. I'm sorry I missed this focus group. I feel like I went to quite a few of them, but um. I can't remember whether I just couldn't go to it or I just didn't go to it.
I I don't, I think Maggie Johnson was scheduled to.
Oh, was she? Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, well, anyway, I'm sorry I missed this one. It would have been great to talk with her about that, so it's good that we're. Gonna maybe loop her in on some things and. I'll have an opportunity.
And you know, we talked about, you know, the town zoning and oops, sorry, um. We talked about town zoning and uh, you know, this grant from Virginia Housing that the town could potentially leverage to uh relook at. Zoning uh that portion of the the code that uh could maybe enable. A little bit more uh ADUs or other accessory dwelling units uh. And that could make a difference too. So I think there it's a, it's not one approach, but it's multiple approaches that we can write into the comp plan uh. For instance, yeah.
Yeah, and and the middle poster board environmental concerns, that was a really interesting. Dialogue. It started with talking about um. The. Bird Street Houses and how the environmental tests are still in progress and and they're wanting to do more and. Um but it it morphed into how can we make better policy going forward and how can we in um. The Planning Commission. Put steps in place early on in the process to that. Developers know what we're looking for and how to make. Things smoother for them. I mean, there's only so many environmental tests that we need to have done because the. County and the state are responsible for some of that. But we are concerned about. The watershed, for example, the dam, the fragile infrastructure there. Um so. Perhaps looking at some of our. Zoning and ordinance to figure out how to shore that up a little bit. And take the burden off of us during the negotiation process. Well, negotiation is not the right word, but during the um. The hearing process. To take the burden off of us so we don't have to know what's asked, but instead it's already in the codes and the questions are already there. We just have to say. Did you answer these questions? Cause you know, as common people, we don't always know the questions to ask. Um so that was, I think that was really helpful. Both Matthew Holt and Kim Highland participated heavily in that part of the discussion.
Yeah, and one other thing to to mention that re- related more to walkability, but um you know, I I had a conversation uh. With someone recently uh and they were telling me about some of the. You know, trails in the uh nature preserve and how there was a study done for putting culverts along the trail to. You know, assist people for crossing some of these small streams. So, you know, I wasn't even aware of this, this um. This study, uh so so basically, yeah, I learned a tremendous amount talking to Dan, so the. Recently, and this was really like a a a light bulb for me that. The comp plan is really can be a document. We can record some of these things and say, hey, by the way, in this year, this study was done. Uh because we don't want this knowledge to be lost. We don't want to have to recreate the wheel also because. Uh some people during the the. The focus group on walkability were talking about, hey, uh we really should build some a small wooden bridges to help people cross these streams. But it seems like that's that thought process has already been done five or ten years ago, right, Dan? Yeah.
So did we ever, did we ever find and locate the walkability studies?
Javier, you you from Nancy, right?
Yeah.
Oh, wait, yeah.
I saw it on paper and I.
Yeah, PDF format, don't you?
Yeah.
Can you send that to us, please?
Yeah.
I'll send it out again.
Again.
We can record in the comp plan to have for future reference. Even not that document itself, but we can at least mention it so we can know where to look.
That's that bibliography that I've been pushing for. You've, you know, there's two buzzwords so far that. You've said and I've gotten excited about. The first one was easements. Every time I hear that word, I get excited that we're we're having that discussion and bibliography. Thank you.
The one thing uh both Javier and uh Lincoln you can do is. A couple of these came from. DCR grants that we went after and there's a lot of documentation and. One that we did for the Overlook Trail and then the one that we did, that would include the. Main Creek Trail, which is the one where you were just referred to that you and I talked about, Lincoln. So those are both former grant requests and they would have a lot of documentation that goes with them, eat both of them.
Okay, good. Keep rolling if that's okay, or would you like to talk a little bit more about housing or walkability?
I'm okay, but I I don't, at risk of embarrassing Commissioner Angeline, I just want to give you a shout out. Because you participated in so many of these focus groups and meetings with VDOT, the other housing meeting that we had. So thank you so much for all the extra time that you've put into it and um. Well, that was very nice. Thank you.
You're welcome. And it, you know, it's it's. It's been a lot, a lot of um extra work on us and we're volunteers, so I really just make sure that. You feel acknowledged. Thank you. Sure. And then I know we've had conversations, so thank you for your participation in those conversations. Um I know Shannon has, uh oh, and also Commissioner Andrew Fine and Shannon have. Um done engagements at the farmer's market that. Go back, that presentation bad. Um so yes, thank you. It's it's been a really engaging. Comp plan, much more so than I thought it would be. So it's and it's been a lot of work um. And and we definitely couldn't have done it without the help of. Uh Lincoln or Javier would be pulling his hair out right now if it was just him. So thank you.
Tell him every week that. I think of him every week about it.
Yeah. All right. Thank you, Lincoln. You can go ahead.
Okay, thank you very much. Um. Yeah, and I just want to mention that, you know, I was I was watching a video of. Uh the previous comp plans engagement meeting. Uh from my memory and what I heard from Mr. Lawless was there's just one real meeting. And it looked like it had about six or seven people at it. So I think we we've uh really invested in engagement and done a lot, so I think it'll pay off, yeah. But these this slide is really the the groups that we've engaged so far. And then I I have another slide uh after this. There's a few last groups that I think we need to engage with, inclu- including youth. I know you've mentioned this, Dan, but um just to recap these these groups and um. You know, we might have missed one or two. Um and when we go through our notes and write write up the report aspects, uh we'll catch a few more perhaps, but. Really have focused on individuals, but in terms of businesses, uh you know, we've engaged with the Chamber. Uh through that event, Tiger Fuel uh twice now. Southern Development uh and then the the event Incorporated Riverbin Boutique, Muddy Paws, uh which is in. Uh Buckingham County, a new winery, uh Rivertown Antique Mall. Uh Baines, of course, and and then OESH Shoes. Um so. Uh the lady that uh operates OES Shoes uh knows a lot about walkability. She's a a a doctor. Um. So that was really useful for her to come to the walkability discussion. Uh nonprofits, uh we we engage with Bay Aging, which is a regional nonprofit on the northern neck, but they've. Focusing on housing, but also transport. So it's pretty amazing organization and um. You know, we don't quite have an organization like that in in the region. Our organization is more fragmented, but uh. They have some really good examples of housing too. We might put in a few mentions of case studies. We're of course uh engaged with uh Stevie from Scan. She's been a frequent flyer at a lot of our events. And then Kim, of course, from Flavana Louisa Housing Foundation. Uh in terms of press, uh of course Nancy Gill from the James Exchange, um she wants me to do a a podcast about the uh. The comp plan uh soon. So uh I see it as as more of a a brief summary of what we've been doing uh and some of the initiatives, just to keep. People interested. Um so I'll engage that and I'll run through my talking points with Javier beforehand. Um then Scottsville Monthly, we've advertised and they've also run some articles for us. Uh about the comp plan. Government institutions, of course, Planning Commission, uh Town Council. Uh Donna Price, um Alamo County Planning, which we're gonna have a follow-up meeting pretty soon. Uh Alamo County Broadband and then Ed from Yancey Community Center. Flavana Planning, we've engaged with uh Thomas Jefferson Planning District Commission, uh we've engaged twice so far. And uh I do have some insights on that. I I bumped into a person around town recently that used to uh work there. Um and he and I are kind of in the same space now in UVA. Um. He says it's challenging for PDC to really engage with Scottsville because any effort they put in for the town would come out of the Alamo County budget. For PDC and that that is a challenge um for Alamo County evidently, yeah. But uh just moving on, uh Scottsville Library, uh VDOT, uh Javier, you've already had a second quarterly meeting, so I think that was a big win. Uh our first engagement kind of yielded this quarterly meeting system with them. And then, of course, we uh engage with Virginia Housing several times, yeah. Um and also just like to take an opportunity for anyone to to. Add on here any of the outreach or listening events that you you wanted to talk about that you you were at or you engage with people around town.
Well, I I mean, I think you should definitely mention the community engagements at the farmer's. At the farmer's market and um, I I think Shannon was at the ball field. We're just around town. I don't know how you would explain that just.
Sports field, I guess. She was doing soccer games, right?
Yeah.
Yep, okay. Okay, so we'll include this, of course, in the comp plan, just to show the thoroughness of the process. And we'll include uh, photographs that we've uh, taken at different events. And also uh, photographs of the the different scribe sheets from the events. Okay, so groups to engage. So um. Basically Buckingham County, uh. I feel we still need to engage with uh, not only for the comp plan, but it might be good to just touch base with Mr. Carter. That's uh, Ms. Carter's uh. You know, new administrator that took over for her. Uh, they're not related, of course, but. Um, Javier said he might organize that meeting and uh, you know, it's not gonna focus a lot on comp plan, but I think it. It might be good just to engage them and ask if there's anything that we're, that's not on our radar that might relate to them. And as you might know, the town has a pretty sizable piece of land uh, in Buckingham County. Um, and if you think that would be useful to include in the comp plan as just a town asset, that that could be.
I'm sorry?
Cher, if I tell you on does not, is not aware, can you tell her about the land?
Maybe Javier, you can, you can take it from here for that that land. We we drove by. Javier and I did.
We have, boom, thirty something acres.
Used to be the town dump longer.
Used to be the town dump. So it came up about last year.
Like fifty years ago.
Yeah, so like some stuff from here got dumped over there. And they cleared it out as though, you're saying I hear around town. Um, but it's also our town dump or our former town dump. So there's some. Careful advice about any asset like that. Uh, because we don't know what's under the ground, but it is something that could be included. Uh, I think last year Town Council talked about maybe trying to do something with it.
I have never heard before.
It's.
Did you know this? I have no idea.
So it got kind of lost. We went through back old records and found an old contract on it, but we own some Buckingham land.
So this is a picture that we took from the, from the car, but. We couldn't quite locate the land. It's quite difficult because it doesn't have, you know, uh, any signage or mailbox, but uh. It it's pretty much a wooded land like this, yeah.
Cut it for lumber, make a hunting club, but. I wouldn't sell it. Cause it's a dump, so. No, I uh, I'm thinking about livelihood.
Sure.
Are you? That's gonna be us.
I don't remember the year. Do you remember what year it was?
I don't know what year it was. Can't remember. I can send you. I I was looking at the the contract information.
We talked about, we talked about it at the town council a while, no, a while back. And there's been every once in a while, like every year or two, we'll talk about something about it. Never, and we never go anywhere.
Yes, did you all, I mean. Acquired to be a dump.
Well, it wasn't though. I mean, it wasn't out like long, long ago, like when land was, like when there was another dump out there. I mean, it was fifty or a hundred, long, long time ago. Yeah.
The two ideas were normally ideas we had.
It was like a hundred and twelve of self-truths.
Yeah, or wait every twenty years, cut it from lumber. And then use that money for whatever you need. Probably I will use it for capital improvements. If I were to suggest that.
I wonder if there would be like a cool project we could do that would use all, I mean, there's so much glass. Back there um, in the. Bank leads. Cause it used, there used to be a dump back there.
Oh, I didn't know that.
Yeah.
Well, that's not the glass.
I don't know if it was an official dump.
No, there's no glass in here. That's all, that's not. That's that's, that's unreal. There's, there's old stuff. Um.
The southern site near where those old cabins are.
Yeah.
Big glass down there.
Yeah, that's not, that's not all, that's not anything.
So I'm just imagining.
All right.
I mean.
There's.
There's glass back there. But if, if you're saying no.
Not, to my knowledge, there's nothing like, anything that we, like, we've cleaned up whatsoever on. To my knowledge, there is a chunk of stuff, like the old houses, which is not, like, it's near there. But there's like four or five old houses.
That's further towards hardware.
Well, right, right on the bombing trail, about sixty yards off, it's very easy to find.
All right. Okay, well, I mean, I think we should definitely mention that site in the comp plan. I don't know what the plan would be for it, but I feel like it should get a mention.
Well, isn't it mentioned in the past? Isn't it?
I mean, I.
I'll I'll do a word search in the twenty eighteen document, but I don't recall seeing it.
Well, possible to come on site. But is there, is there any belief that there's more waste? Like toxic waste there than than elsewhere? I mean, let me rephrase that. Do we have any evidence that the tire factory used to send their waste over there?
I don't know. I think now we're just speculating.
Okay.
Yeah. Um. Just the best advice I already got, and I think every two, three years, we get the same advice from our attorneys.
Which is?
Well, just hold on to it because it's an old site and then you don't want to sell it off and then. Be liable for something down the road. Um, but every twenty years you can cut it for lumber. And I think in the next few years, maybe it's been twenty years since we cut it.
Okay.
Um, I always heard the rumor, we use that lumber to build a lot of. Uh, this uh, building to do improvements on this building. That's what I've heard, but you know. Well, that's what I. Town Council can decide on that.
All right, sorry to derail us. Go ahead, Lincoln.
Okay, um, so for Havana, we'll have a second meeting with them uh, pretty soon. Um, mainly to talk about the urban development area that it seems they've designated. On the eastern part of our town. Um, then Albemarle County, we're gonna have a follow-up meeting with them and they're gonna come down to Scottsville. Which I think was a really big uh, positive thing that they had mentioned to us. Um, it's really meaningful that they want to drive thirty minutes from uh. The county headquarters down to Scottsville for a meeting. Um, so I would advocate that maybe a a planning commissioner could come. I know Lisa, you you attended our last meeting with Albemarle County. So if, um, we'll try to, if it's, if you want to go, go again, then we could uh, kind of coordinate dates and times.
Um, I'd be interested. We can go.
Perfect. The more that, uh, up to two, the merrier, because it really shows that uh, the planning commission is interested. And uh, we're wanting to to collaborate with the county. I think that's good.
And that came up in. I mean, most of our focus groups that I attended. The the collaboration and the the need to make sure that we're engaging our. Neighbors and community partners.
Yes, I agree.
I have one more quick question. Um. Did you all have a second VDOT meeting?
We had a preliminary one and then the first quarter one. Was October, like twenty third, twenty fourth, something like that.
Okay.
And then we'll do another quarterly.
Okay, um, is that something that you send out information about? Um, I was kind of hoping to. You know, be a part of that if possible. I don't know whether that's appropriate or not, but.
Yeah, the only thing I'm concerned about having more than two commissioners. What I can do is.
Oh, you have, you are, you have two.
No.
Oh.
So along the way, say, I can include you on the email. I could bring the next quarter one.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, you, you didn't um, send the email, but I didn't send an email. It just happened to over here and I was like, oh, I want to participate in that. Yeah, but but to be honest with you, I didn't find it to be very fruitful. I feel like that was a meeting that could have just been addressed. By emails about issues going on in town. I don't think we had any. That's okay. We need to keep it going. Uh, I don't know. I don't, I don't want to bring them down, sit in a meeting that where there's, we we really kind of didn't have much to talk about, so. I don't, I mean, I I want to just be mindful of, well, my, but theirs and yours as well, so.
I'll probably talk with council about what those priorities are. With it, um, and see what's the best approach with that. Um, but I I I tend to agree with you. I'll put it that way.
Cause if it, if it's a matter of saying, this intersection needs to be looked, the, you know, something's broken here that. That's an email that gets sent out to our representative.
Yeah, and I think some of that, and then I'll start attending uh. Albemarle County meetings with VDOT, which I think will be a little bit more fruitful. Uh, cause I think I'll bring issues I heard here to that arena. Um. But I'll tell you that, I'll I'll let you know next week. After it happens, kind of figuring it out.
Yeah.
But I can include you.
But yeah. I'm kind of just waiting about that now. Well, I mean, if you were at the meeting, I'm sure it would have been much more engaging. We would have had more just like. Well, I just think we have issues and that we could keep that relationship going. Yeah. I think that the meeting with the county there will be where where we get a lot of that stuff done. You know, that that planning meeting with the county is gonna be big. I definitely want it. Okay, Paul, I would really be interested. Thank you. Sorry to derail you again. Groups to engage.
Uh, regarding VDOT, this is actually a a good uh. Opportunity to mention that um, I had emailed around the county's prioritization of intersection improvements. Two, two weeks ago. And I had last found the twenty nineteen document, so I compared regarding. Priorities in twenty nineteen versus twenty twenty three and uh, and the twenty twenty three priorities are in draft form right now. But basically James River Road and um, Route Route Twenty has really dropped on the county's prioritization list. And um, I do think uh, personally and professionally that. That intersection will become even more important when the Tiger Fuel comes up, because there'll be a lot of people uh. Turning off of Valley Street or Twenty into the gas station. And you know, there's a little bit of crest there. That'll become an even more challenging intersection. So I I think uh. Whether it's a quarterly meeting with uh, VDOT or a meeting with VDOT and the county. I think that might be a place where we need to advocate for boosting the priority of that intersection. And maybe it's because of landings. They have a elaborate scoring system. And perhaps. The county is not aware of what's up and coming there, for instance, the gas station, because they're not involved in the land use approval process. They're only involved in. Building inspection. I'm just not sure the linkages there in terms of policy. Um, but tha- that might be a future discussion topic with the county and VDOT, I would suggest. Because.
You make a really good point that that does. Change the game a little bit in that intersection. That intersection was long been one. That there, we've had multiple different conversations. I mean, if you go back ten years, there've been. Different reports about ideas about that intersection, and I think you're right that. That intersection is gonna look different six months from now than it does now in terms of usage.
Yeah, I know, you're gonna have like a. Gas station sign and things going on there. There's just gonna be a lot of. Distractions also for vehi- vehi- vehicle drivers. And I think it'll be quite challenging for some folks, yeah, potentially. But uh, again, that's advocacy and uh, I think discussion with the county could help that ranking. Right now, that that intersection is dead last on the county's list. It's, I think, eight uh, intersection number eighty nine. So it's never gonna get funding unless it moves up higher. Yeah, in twenty nineteen, I think it was uh, intersection number forty three, so it's, it's drops, you know, significantly.
Lincoln, you said there's still time for advocacy for that?
Yes, because I, you know, I get the county's emails. Um, they have, you know, periodic updates and uh, I think that was about two to three weeks ago. That they said that they were in draft form and that they're gonna go through several cycles of uh, the county uh. Board of Supervisors discussing and, you know, moving intersections up or down.
Javier, could you take that just? That's something so that we we're clear about that, because I don't think the, I know you heard that. But I think it obviously means we as a council should address that as, like, we should talk about that.
Could you repeat that? I'm, I'm trying to.
I'm sorry. Put it in English.
Yes.
Following up on what he just said, it seems wise that we, as an agenda item or as a topic. Talk about how do we increase. Our number from number eighty nine up the list. Some of that means we would have to follow up with the town council or even have the mayor or something. So I'm suggesting that maybe we. Take what Lincoln just said, put it in an agenda note for our, our meeting.
Yeah, I think talking about that uh, that uh, is it a six-year plan? That the county does and then putting it as an agenda item and as kind of a priority for town council. That wouldn't hurt because we're so low on the list. Um, I feel like. Our traffic improvements need to be higher to even get into that arena where. VDOT money gets allocated to us.
Cause he, he's correct in this, in the sense, this is, this is gonna be a game changer for that intersection and we've already had it. Highlighted long before with this. So like, I think whatever happens to drop it makes no sense to me. And on the other hand, I think like you said, Lincoln, that we, we need to advocate to have that intersection seen as a higher priority.
So I can add it to the agenda, um, just to, um. Tie a bow, sorry, Lincoln. Um, I sent out the two thousand three, two thousand four and to Dan's point. In that study, we talked about that intersection uh, previously. It's something that was very important here. So when you look at the draft that especially has maps, you'll notice that later on. Um, I shared that with you in a paper copy too.
Oh goodness.
That intersection.
Well, things, things, you have a chance, they they go down for generations even, but but the, but the thing again, coming back to this. I don't know, do we know the study that they did in terms of traffic, what they anticipate that turn out to be? Do we have data from that? I don't remember what it was, because it's, there's no question that he's right, that it's gonna be a significant. Change to that intersection and it's one that's gonna merit. It certainly is better than eighty nine, so the easiest way to say it.
So. I can check in with the VDOT, um, because they're supposed to do any comments on the site map. That might be as far as we know, because we didn't have a, a specific study on it, same way we had. Uh, last year on Burn Street and Harrison. Uh, so it's a roundabout way, but I don't have a.
Well, that might be something to ask VDOT is to see if they could do something about that, because if we're gonna get. Higher on that list, we need data. There needs to be some data to back up what we said. It's not gonna be hard to, I mean, it's, if they have a business, they're gonna have a lot of people stop by there. It's, it's not complicated. Getting quantifiable data would be complicated, but. Thank you, Lincoln, for bringing that out, because that really is something that out of this is gonna be a reality. We, it. It just means, because that intersection is also prone to accidents, unfortunately. There's accidents happen there for the same reason you said.
Yeah, and just with a a big gas station sign and, you know, different things to look at. I think motorists are gonna be distracted too and a lot more people turning. Uh, so I I assume the previous vehicle counts. Uh, they they factor in the people turning into, you know, the food line area, so on and so forth, but I think a gas station will have a a lot more turns, yeah. Okay, um, so yeah, I think it's really worthwhile for uh. Town council to discuss in the next work, work session or such. Um, so just to keep rolling, um. At the bottom of our list here on this page, we, we have youth engagement. So Javier and I were talking earlier today. But how can we really uh, thoughtfully engage with the youth in the community? So one idea that I proposed was um, to have the Boys and Girls Club walk over to. Town council chambers uh, one, one day uh, after school. Cause it's a really short walk and maybe the kids could sit up where you're sitting right now at the dais. And we could present to them a really simple things about the comp plan and ask them their advice and. And we can have little mock decisions. Just some, some way of engaging, you know, and talking to them about the civic process, yeah.
I think that's fantastic.
That would be really fun. And you know, um. When my daughter came to one of the first town council or planning commission meetings, um. She sat up there and banged the gavel and she just thought that was the best thing in the world. I think, Lisa, you took a photo of her too, so. Thank you so much. Um, so I think something like that might be really worthwhile and we can uh. Engage with them, uh, ask them questions about what they think about the community. They can do the sticker exercise uh, about where they think, you know, walkability. You know, walkability could be improved in their neighborhood. Um, so that that'd be Boys and Girls Club, that'd be, I think, fun and relatively easy, uh we can uh engage with them, um. And maybe, you know, one or two uh commissioners could come, I know, um. Strassner might might wanna engage cuz her sons, you know, attend there too. Uh, and then the other option is to engage with uh the uh Scottsville Public School, we could invite. Uh, a class down to to do the same thing, maybe they have to take the bus down. But uh we could do that, so just wa- wanted to get your feedback on on these possibilities.
Oh yes, that's my feedback.
Yeah, I think I think the same, Lincoln, in terms of following up. What we chatted about, I think both it does two things, one is. It helps them understand that their voices are valued and then they may have some ideas that actually are helpful too, they may come up with. A few things that we haven't thought of.
Yeah, and I think it's it's a little bit different than than. Us going to them and making a presentation in their classroom or in the. Gymnasium, for instance, uh at at the Boys and Girls Club at the. At the old school, um but them coming to the town council chambers, I think would be a really unique opportunity. Uh, to engage and be fun for them. And you know, we were also talking about doing a youth engagement thing during this uh wrap-up meeting we were talking about, but. I just don't think we'd get the the cross-section of kids coming to that sort of meeting. Um, I think bringing a whole class from Boys and Girls Club or the public school would be the the best way. Uh, in terms of the public school, um, are there any? Teachers we could engage with to bring their class, uh or is. The principal well-known in the in the community by anyone? Just don't know the best route for this.
Yeah, uh Shannon.
Okay.
Reach out to Shannon, yeah. She's involved in the PTO, so she definitely knows who the. Pieces are.
Yeah, just a little thing from thank from Halloween, we were doing trick or treat out here. A gentleman come up with his son, he was probably, I don't know, ten or eleven-ish. And he said they had to use restroom, so I brought him up, he used the restroom. And he his his son was out there looking around and just kinda. Seeing what he could see. And they live on Glen High somewhere. And he said, he his dad came out and said, this is the council chambers, this is where they set, that's where the mayor sets. And this is where they make. You know, the some of the laws and motions that govern our town. And the little guy was asking questions, he was really. Interested, you know.
Yeah.
About what what actually went on in here.
Yeah, I thought it might be kind of a neat idea, e- even, I don't know whether Scottsville Elementary has this kind of tie-in. But some sort of government or, um, you know, a government class. Uh, it could really be a win-win on both sides.
I mean, it could be an annual thing, yeah.
Oh yeah, but I think that's fantastic.
Yes, please, let's make this happen.
Great, okay, well, I have it on the calendar in a subsequent slide, we can talk about details in terms of dates, okay. Um, so Dan, does this really get at what you mentioned in our previous meeting, um? Last month, I believe it was about youth engagement, would this really help us in that area?
Yeah, yeah, that's 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 great, that's. It fulfilled what I had in mind.
Awesome, okay. Great, okay, so um we'll keep rolling, just wanna give you a little bit of information about this conference, uh about ten days ago that Javier and I. Uh presented that, it was a lightning talk, it was only seven minutes we spoke. But um we were on a panel with various people, um. And this conference was called the University Network for Collaborative Governance, it's uh. Basically, a bunch of uh academics from across United States, there are people from Idaho, a lot of people from Oregon. Um, uh Chicago area, uh the lady that's speaking on the left-hand side is from New Hampshire. But it's really a a lot of people uh that focus on collaborative governance methods, so. The the gentleman that introduced me to uh Scottsville, for instance, is Frank Dukes, he's really well-known around the country. For collaborative governance, I'm just highlighting him right here. Um. But he he's really one of the people that brought brought everyone together. Uh for this conference, and there were about, you know, thirty so people that came uh throughout, but. Um, I'll just share the. The slides, um you know, the the title of this small conference was called Collaborative Governance in Action on the Ground in Virginia. So I wrote this abstract quite a long time ago, but I I thought a catchy ti- title would be right sizing engagement for Scottsville's comprehensive plan. So we really had to right-size what we do here, cuz we don't have a lot of resources or time or volunteers, right? Um, but it started off with this photograph that I took at a uh town council work session. Couple months ago, but you've got Donna presenting there at the county level. We've got the staff there, we've got Mr. Bowling, the lawyer in the suit, of course. We've got Mayor surrounded by the town counselors, uh and we've got Police Chief and we've even got Jack, the volunteer on the far left-hand side. And then we've got iconography, we've got the flags, the picture of the um, you know, the town and the horseshoe bend. We even got the tin roof of the of the room that really shows the um. The um, the historic nature of the building, the Victory Hall, so we talked about this as local governance here in Scottsville. Uh, we just shared about the location of Scottsville because this conference was in Charlottesville. A lot of people from out of out of state. We we showed this diagram and uh quite a few people, I'd have to say, got really excited. One lady even ran up to us after the uh event and and wanted to talk more about this. Um, she's the one from New Hampshire, um she's a communication professor. Uh, she's written a quite a substantial book, but uh she really started comparing her communication methods with this diagram. And she really liked uh in her terms, the apple pie principles on the left-hand side, especially number one and two. Cuz these are kind of one and two retaining small-town character and fostering stewardship everyone pretty much agrees with. We found out through engagement that enabling growth, a lot of people agree with, uh it just depends on where the growth is, what type of growth i- it is. So it's very specific, um. But in terms of the goals, those are cross-cutting, this weaving approach, uh so she got really excited, uh and this is kind of using some of the things she's been talking about. Um, and we were very much on the ground, talking about something that's very, uh you know, much. You know, practical and happening, and she's more of an academic, but this is kind of merging her interests and and what we're doing, so it's it's pretty exciting. Um, I'll just keep rolling, Javier spoke about these slides, do you wanna share a little bit more here?
So we kind of gave an overview and talked about how, uh for example, that. We were talking about collaborative governance and collaborative planning, so I think if you guys remember going back over the last few months. Um, the language changed twice before we came back. To uh retain a small-town character, so it was just an example of like you have of having a process where we can kind of. Hash out these uh apple pie principles as as Lincoln uh uh as a professor shared with us. Um, what, two weeks ago, when was it, twenty seven?
We got Friday the twenty seven. Um, I'll just advance this slide for you, Javier, if that's okay.
Yeah, and then uh we said a little bit about how uh stewardship also really expanded for us once we started discussing it. I think Lincoln, I think it was a a good example of how staff will approach things and think about things in a specific way, and then it's useful to have these engagements. Or to talk with your boards or commissioners, so I think Lincoln and me primarily. Approached it as thinking about it just purely the environment. The stewardship of the environment, and then we had really interesting conversations during that meeting. About how, well, you know, the environment is multifaceted when you're talking about the farmer's market, about Van Cleve, about our trails. Uh, and then what about stewardship of our historic downtown, you know, our historic district? Uh, you know, Scottsville School Apartments, uh and then of course, like our park down there, uh Canal Base Square. So it's, you know, even touching about stewardship into something a little bit more intangible, like um our history, rather than just, you know. Uh, our trails, which you can literally step on.
And these are all photos of our trails or in southern development land, um, you know.
Over there too?
Sorry?
I think that scan over there, also photo scan land.
Um, I think on the upper left-hand photo, I was taking this photograph from the town truck uh next to the water tower.
Okay, so our green states also.
Big, big tree, but yeah, Scanland is very similar, um, but it it's just amazing, uh I think the the amount of. And in the town boundary in this green field, yeah. Uh, I'll just keep rolling, uh Enabling Growth was was the last uh picture slide Javier that you spoke to.
Yeah, and that's a photo of Fourth of July, if you can kind of tell from the little uh people who look like ants from that. But, uh, so we just discussed about, you know, during that growth section, we discussed general density. Uh, we made some demarcations about uptown, midtown and downtown. Uh, and then uh we also had to have different conversations about housing. And how housing looks uh uh multiple ways, so we were as staff thinking about. Conversations we've had with you guys, conversations we had at the palace, even the survey, but we only had seven minutes, so it was overarching. We didn't get into our survey detailed like that for this.
And yeah, this is where we really gave a recap and really. Showed pictures of the enga- some of the engagement, um. And uh really talked about next steps, uh and I think the closing thoughts, they really appreciate it too. Anything else, Javier, closing thoughts, yeah?
Yeah, I think w- we just kind of touched upon how important informal networks are, so for example, our business roundtable was because I just went out and talked to businesses. And asked them to show up. Uh, and all of those that I talked to didn't show up, or some of them couldn't, but they had good reason, they were busy running a business. Uh, and they. I hit upon how important our volunteer force is, um and like our dedication time that we provide, so it was actually a pretty good time. Lisa, you sharing that with council members, but uh you can see it from a lot of the work either we share from the past or now. It ends up being a lot of our uh appointees and our volunteers around town that add to that, that offsets our small staff.
You know, and this is just a quick aside, I I often think about, um, when I think about volunteering, I think about. Um, when one year for um. Founder's Day or. Whatever it's called. Remember, but anyway, um, Atlee Church came out, that's. A huge, really enthusiastic and kind of forceful. You know, force in the event, and. I think that if we cultivate a little bit more with our relationships with like the Scottsville Elementary PTO and. Places like that, obviously, we've talked about engaging the youth, but I think that. That can be an avenue to more um volunteering. I just think that with different churches, the schools, whoever. Um, getting groups to come and and help us, you know, create events in the town or. You know, just doing these kinds of volunteer events, I think it'd be worth looking into.
Think a small cohort of civic leaders could work on that, I I have a background in that. Um, people need to feel appreciated when they do that, and they will be coming back. Yeah, so I agree with you.
Yeah, they were, they were amazing. Um, and I think just, you know, from continual and staple. You know, events and and things like that, I think it would be a really great way to get the youth involved.
Okay, do you mind if we keep rolling?
Yeah, no, I'd like to talk about more stuff.
Okay. Um, so. Basically, we probably need to talk about this uh community meeting. And I think it'd be a a great opportunity to have a joint session, I know at the beginning of this whole process, I was really. Hoping we could have a few joint sessions scattered throughout our processes. Uh, to really engage town council and planning commission together to hear. Uh, different different views and some of the same information, you know what I mean? To try to work out some some things as we go, uh we haven't quite had the chance to do that yet, but um. For instance, Javier and I were discussing uh that this could be an opportunity for planning commission to invite. Uh, town council members to to a meeting. Uh, we've hashed out that maybe November fifteenth, Wednesday could be a an opportunity. Um. You know, maybe there's some other dates that other people might have in mind, um. Sorry, say again?
Nothing, no.
Okay.
Good evening, sounds great.
But the presentation, uh you know, I I would prepare that, it'd be really. Um, a recap of what's been heard. Um, and. An opportunity for a sounding board, uh let's say, uh we invite the community through various communication channels. And uh, you know, we say, is there anything that we missed, uh or is there any new information you'd like to share? And uh, we put a lot of information on the slides. And this would also be an opportunity, let's say, a a town counselor or planning commissioner. You know. Wants to add something new, this might be a good last last open-ended input. Cuz after this, we're we're gonna start finalizing things into the proposed document. Um, and if we don't hear it at this meeting, then it's gonna be coming a little bit late in the process. Of course, we're gonna have to have the public hearings as as normal, but we'd really ha- like to get all the last information here at this. At the sounding board event, yeah. Javier, anything else to add about this?
I think it would be a good symbolic gesture also for planning commission to invite town council. To this session, um, I think Lincoln and I have kind of a format we discussed today that would make it really. Um. Informative for everyone, uh be it for uh town council members or public members. And then I I I think it's a good opportunity to, as Lincoln said, we we wanted to have more joint sessions, but it, you know, just the way the. Calendar has worked out for us, um, we've had the benefit of having more community engagement as we just saw. Uh, but I I think this is a very, this would be a very good opportunity, like Lincoln said, um. To touch base with everyone before we get into that really mini-grain of trying to write it up.
Yeah.
Yeah, uh, that's all I was just gonna say.
For instance, um, on the weaving approach, you know, I I, so far I haven't heard any, um. Questions on that, um. So far, I've heard positive things, but if if there's a a time to to have a discussion on that, that might be now or at this. At this community meeting, that. Uh, town counselor, for instance, if they have significant questions, they can, they can raise this and we can discuss it. Or or other topics, like for instance, on housing and or anything else. Um, this could be that meeting, and if if people don't come forward, then we gotta keep moving, you know what I mean? Um, and Javier, you just mentioned the format, that's a, that's a great uh opportunity for me to add that. Basically, you know, I can prepare the presentation and uh Javier and I can kind of be the. The moderators or stewards of the presentation, but it'd be really great if we have a plan. For certain uh planning commissioners or town councillors to speak to certain slides. For instance, I could introduce a slide on walkability, but a a town town, uh. Uh, town councillor that that was at the walkability could also chime in and say, hey, yeah, I heard that, and I also heard this, and I I. There 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 are great things that we need to include in the comp plan, that that, um, uh, we could say, presentation-level advocacy, I think is important.
Okay. Um. Have you been presenting before a town council? About about the process as we've gone along, I know you you did, but what about the focus groups?
Uh, no, we, town council doesn't have an update uh that I move on the focus groups, um. I last presented at a work session about uh two months ago, if I, maybe two and a half.
About the survey, okay.
The survey, uh, the survey hadn't quite closed yet, uh I did get some feedback that it. You know, don't talk about the survey until it's completely done, but um it's done now, and um. I'd be glad to update town council at the next opportunity, whether it's at this meeting or the. On the fifteenth or at the at at their next work session or so and so forth. I have a calendar on the next couple of slides, we could talk a little bit more about dates, uh about all this too. If this really sounds good, uh I can start preparing the PowerPoint.
Yeah, so um my other comment would be that.
Yeah, so um my other comment would be that we invited. Councillors and councillors did attend those groups, so it's not gonna be totally new to them, there are gonna be people who wills. Say that they were there and know this and 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 perhaps disgusted, so it won't be totally foreign to them. And then the other point is, we probably need more than one date. This might be something that ends up being a big discussion and. We might end up wanting to have two dates, or maybe let's plan for two. And then the other thing is, this is an excellent segue into the public meeting. So all your slides and your presentation and your drafts and your texts will be able to get us to that next meeting really well.
Yeah, I've been thinking about that, and may maybe Javier, I can, I can mention a few thoughts real quick, and then you can jump in too, right?
Yeah.
Basically, um the the most effort is putting together a presentation, it takes, it can take a long time. Especially uh con- converting some of those focus group uh points into bullet points, right? So that's a lot of effort, um but there's also a concern that if we have. Two events and uh we don't get enough people, it could, we could lose a little bit of momentum too. That's um, you know, kind of like.
Town count, two joint meetings between town council and planning commission.
Yeah, that's also a lot of time for the town council, um just thinking about this um.
Well, the reason why I say that is because we. We've been, and Molly and I attended most of these, and we've been talking about this for an hour now. Just imagine the questions and comments that folks who didn't attend are going to have. With all of the focus groups on the table for discussion, so I don't know how to make that. More concise and and move along faster while still giving people the opportunity to speak up and and share any other thoughts they want included.
I'm also running out of um, how do you say it?
Budget?
Yes, I'm I'm running out of tarmac to get this plane off. Um one thought I had was. If we have this as a capstone event for all the community engagement events. We're naturally gonna have to have a public hearing for planning commission and a public hearing for town council. So if we can treat this as an opportunity, as Lincoln said and and we discussed before, as getting, Becky used to say this, any heartburn we have. Like, is there anything that gives you heartburn? And then we're able to, uh I think Lincoln was gonna share a slide of what we saw our timetable to be before the third and first. Um we can feel like we're going the right direction as we're writing it. But I think there would still be a draft where I would want. And maybe Lincoln could step away and it would be uh me as staff working with planning commission. What else do we need to massage on this before you recommend it out? So in some ways, you can think of planning commission as providing a ready recommendation for town council. Now, that is in um, not in practical sense, you know, that's the theoretical. Uh we'll present to town council. I think maybe there would be an opportunity, they'd be interested in a joint session. But I would think of that as a much more similar to uh some of the joint sessions we did last year, which was much more, I guess, dry. Than what this event is, and there you could have some discussions about, hey, what's the reasoning behind this from the planning mission? This is the reasoning of the town council, and then it becomes some editing of the text before. Town council will probably wanna have some input before uh building on it, I've almost seen that. I've seen that in every one of these processes, not just Scottsville. Uh that's how I could do it with having Lincoln kind of get off board and at an appropriate time. And us doing enough with what what I have as an answer right now, so I I would say yes, if I had a, you know, target.
So then how can we make that engagement go faster and smoother, cause?
I, yeah, I think uh Lincoln and us working on the presentation in kind of being proctors. And some of it being uh, this is a period of inform, like informational. Like, we're catching you up, just for example, like we could uh suggest it like. Part of it would be just catching up on what we talked about now, cause we had those events in October. Into November since the last meeting we had with town council. And then having select opportunities to sound off or for a sounding board, this I think is the language Lincoln uses.
Uh one of the things, I'm just gonna say this as the town councillor, and this, like it might be going back to you for next week. Being somewhat of a delegating person, I, when I was on town council, you've been through policies before, when they came to council, I wasn't going through every detail of every part of it. I was simply thinking the town, the planning commission did its job successfully, I was trusting what the planning commission did. That was just me, not everybody's different. I do think it's wise, Lincoln or Javier, maybe you have a short hello next, like this coming Monday, like. Not a very long presentation, but uh we're gonna do this on this date, we're gonna do this on this date, we're gonna do this, and then have any questions. And um so anyways, I'm just speaking for me, but so when it comes to the, when it goes to the town council, it could be two meetings, it could, it could be. But for my part, what I was done in the past, so I've kind of thought the planning commission's done their job, I would give it a. Review, but it's moving forward, the difficult part of this whole process, process, I have to go to what mom was saying. It's just a piece of paper until we do something with it. So in other words, the hard part of this process isn't this part, the hard part is actually doing it. In the future, if we do choose to do various parts of this, that's where it gets really hard, this is actually the easy part in terms of. Thinking it through, having the meetings, getting all the information. It's the other part thus far, I mean, not this is hard too, but it's then we have to kind of really figure out our priorities and how to do my own.
You probably, I don't know Lincoln's schedule, but I could probably find a brief at the beginning of next work session. Um you know, I already have a presentation I could work off and tonight. And that will kind of give an update, I I do think, once we have more of a substantive document. If into the new year, we wanna start having joint sessions to discuss it, I think, I think that's also much. That would be more productive, cause to the point is like you'll have something material in the text. And those, those apple pie discussions we've had, we can actually have discussions about. How are those values represented in this document? Uh I think that would be reasonable timing to kind of. Successfully sh- uh complete a comprehensive plan.
I I think so too Javier, I think that's a good point, that it might be best for us to put. Some text on the the paper, the updates on the paper um. Uh and then have a a joint session a little bit later, but uh next Monday, I'd be glad to. Give a brief overview to town council, I can, I can zoom in, uh I don't have class that night, so that'd be.
Two and seven minute talk.
No, I don't, I think he's right, I think a very short, I mean, when you would do, you could, my suggestion would be, you could. Couple of very, I mean, ten minutes, boom, 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 and then you're open to questions, you know, tell the council what questions you have. Or just just wanted, I'm here for whatever you have, I think that would be received well, I think, even from whether people like or don't like the process. They would, they 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 would then feel like they could ask you questions.
Okay.
We got all the draft files that we first, and had the year. Yeah.
So maybe I'll I'll advance uh to our our calendar here, um and we can come back and discuss more, of course. Um so I wanna talk a little bit more about this today, uh I kind of wanna. Get any last comments before we start writing, uh I'll come back to this in a few minutes, but here here's our scheduling um. So we've got November here, um so I've got in blue the planning commission tonight. Then uh that community meeting uh would be on the fifteenth of November, and then we talked about youth engagement. Uh probably the week after Thanksgiving, I think would be feasible, once we arrange things with boys and girls and in this, in the school. Um I'll just keep rolling to December, here's what we're looking at, planning commission would be on uh the fourth of December. And then me, myself, I'll have the most time to write and and really sit down. And I propose uh having discussions with two commissioners at a time to focus on different areas. Kind of like with what we've done before. Um if, I'll just go back to November, if we uh do not have this community meeting in the middle of November. That'll enable Javier and I, I think, to start thinking about writing a little bit earlier, where they hit the ground a little bit earlier um. And we could even get a little bit more done before the middle of December. So the idea uh is to have that draft done by the end of this calendar year, so you ha- see there, the the draft. Somewhere at the end of December. Um and the the other thing that I have to mention is the maps, that's, that's another aspect um that is. Uh separate from the writing pretty much, but it does take a level of effort on my my behalf to dig into the GIS. And uh you you do remember that we we do have this boundary issue on the Fluvana side and uh even. Uh down along the river that hasn't been updated in the. The GIS file we got from Thomas Jefferson Planning District Commission, so those are considerations we have to work in parallel, yeah. I'll just keep going to to January, uh the planning commission meeting will be on Tuesday the second, because the first is a holiday. Um so this is really that range where we could start thinking about public hearings. Uh Har- Javier and I talked about that earlier today, do you, do you have anything to add here Javier?
No, uh at least, Lisa?
Well, I was gonna say staff, we usually give staff off that that Monday, um the January meeting rather, so. Because of the holidays and, yeah, we usually skip January, go in February. I don't see where that would be feasible this year, right?
Or or we could have it, uh I guess we would call it especially.
How about this, this, this is a suggestion, Chair, to maybe you and the mayor have a conversation as to the final parts of this, because. We would wanna have an agreement, whatever he thinks the town council would do at that time. When you're saying Lincoln is your flexible on that community meeting dates, this maybe, cause that seems to me, maybe. If the town council's meeting on Monday, they might, not, people might not be ready to zip and have a meeting the next. You know, the next day, you know, two days later, but it could be a conversation between you, or maybe you have the conversation part.
I I think Dan's hitting upon a point, like what I'm seeing is specifically staff work is thirty first, it's a draft getting out. That's policy, and then beyond that, it becomes a question of planning commission and town councils. Those are the public hearings, the work you guys do on it, you look at the staff work and go, hey, what does this look like as a comp plan? Um Lincoln and me and the mayor talk about that community meeting, about how we could time it. To get it in between that, between Lincoln's priorities, between my regular work, um I've freed, I've been freed up, cause I'm. Lucky enough to have Melanie here starting to work as uh uh um town clerk. But I'll jump immediately into helping Lincoln write, so I think. Uh I think to, sorry Dan, uh I think to the point is. What we're kind of looking at is, wh- what do we think about that November community meeting? And then uh about our timing, uh you know, we could look at the youth event would be the time we would have. Be Thanksgiving and the community meeting to do youth event, uh before the year wraps up for kids too. And then uh in December, thinking about writing and having uh, you know, two person session with commissioners. Or we could even new town council too and start touching upon aspects of the comp plan as we work our way through it. Um and I feel like that's a way to still have that engagement that we talked about uh within our timeline, because I think that was part of the. Hey, what if we had two joint sessions together, uh we could use those opportunities to have. Discussion with town council members, and it's sometimes easier to have a conversation than a presentation also. On two ones, and then Lincoln and I can split up the work, I can take some of them also, Lincoln's out, uh take somebody else.
Just to follow up on what you said, I'm I'm more, I totally agree with it, I agree with it, I was more saying that if against Chair and the mayor, like. They just come up with whatever schedule that you think works, being between, if you want two meetings, or if you wanna change the state or. Whatever helps make it easier for y'all to write, but it also gets the right engagement happening.
And those are very much Chair decisions and Mayor decision.
And just to share from my uh perspective, uh I finished classes during the week of fourth of December, so that's why uh I'm much more freer. The weeks of eleventh and eighteenth December, and I think writing this document or updating sections of it. I think I just need to sit down and write, so Javier and I are talking about meeting at a coffee shop in Charlottesville to just. Focus and not open our emails and do other things, you know what I mean? So that's why I've kind of set aside this time for writing discussion for my.
If Javier only went to Vegas, it'd be easier for him to do that, as you can, with Charlotte.
Yeah, uh sorry, I couldn't hear you, Dan? Okay.
Hello, uh I I might be a little bit lost, I'm sorry, um the community meeting. I I think we've talked about maybe getting some. Feedback from that meeting before we delve into the text. I don't really know that that's very important, because we can edit the text, but. Sounds like you're really set on writing in December because of your school schedule, that makes perfect sense, so if that works, you go for it. Um you're gonna meet with town council sometime before, you're gonna meet with them next Monday to go over the results of the. Comp plan conversations thus far and the focus groups, right? Great. Right, did I get that right?
Yes.
Okay, awesome, the youth, excellent, I mean, I think that's great timing, um. But I think that's flexible, I can have them at any time, so if. If you needed to do something else, that would, I think, the youth can be moved around a little bit. Um and then as far as December, if you can get us the draft, December, you know, twenty ninth. We can still take off that Tuesday and give staff that Tuesday meeting off. And schedule a public hearing for whenever, Wednesday the third, Thursday the fourth. And we can just go straight into a public meeting. Hopefully, the planning commission will review the document. Over that long weekend and those days, I don't know how how realistic that is, but I think if we can commit to that. We can keep things moving on a decent schedule.
This, this December, fall, I could put it in the agenda, uh consideration for January for that third or fourth. Date, and then you could call a session a month ahead, a special session to do that public hearing, and then. That also provides some time for uh you guys to discuss, because I wanna be clear also. Calling a public hearing doesn't mean you have to take action on that item, so um it becomes more in your range, so, you know. You need a month or two to work on some other stuff, uh it'll be more me with you guys, and we can work on that, at that point.
And we could even do small groups, I mean, we could even break out into two person groups to take, you know, tackle sections of the text. Cause when we did the West Downtown Small Area Plan, we had two. Commissioners working with members of the public to to tweak it, maybe we can do that.
That's, that's, yeah, I think that would work, we could discuss that a third or the fourth also, if you're looking at that anywhere. Um. Yeah.
So having a a special session and pub- pub- public meeting in that first week, not Tuesday?
Uh not the fourth, it's on the uh ARB.
Okay.
So honestly, the third.
Is that okay?
Yeah, I can do that, I'll be back.
All right. And that, if once Lincoln gets that draft on, Lincoln, I mean, you know, you have gotten us nine. Tens of the way there, so I mean, I don't know if it's within your capacity or. Tarmac to continue, but if not, I feel like, okay, we've gotten. A huge hurdle out of the way, and we can kind of figure it out after that.
Well, I I'm definitely committed to uh continue on until it gets approved by town council.
Okay, music to the ears.
Even if I'm, I I'm volunteering at that point, I I'm very committed to uh being there when it gets approved.
Wow, all right, okay, awesome, thank you.
But um yeah, I I I think it's important uh just to carry on the process, because there's a lot of knowledge um that we have to put in that that document.
Yes, and a lot, a lot. Yes, and a lot of it lives in your head.
And and in my in my notebook.
In your notebook, okay.
Yeah, let's just talk about this community meeting because maybe um, you know, this public hearing could be that community meeting. I mean, we could. Brand it a little bit differently to to create some excitement around typically what is a dry community public hearing, right? Um I just wanted to get your thoughts on that because um if we have. Multiple events, people might get confused and and not attend any of them or might attend one, but not the other ones. So is it possible we could create some sort of buzz on January third? And do it all together?
Yeah, you know, the original thought. I I think I was the one that came up with the community meeting idea because I assumed there'd be a lot of input, there'd be a lot of people hot about this. Wanted to hear about it, wanted to talk about it and engage on it, and I wanted to. Kind of. Just really let people know that they're being heard by being proactive and having extra engagement sessions, but based upon. The. Engagements that we've had, I don't really think that is really necessary any longer, so maybe just jump right into the hearing in January. And skipping that. Fifteenth.
In January, are there any um? Public events in Scottsville or anything we could tie? Together with? Uh and it would be the official public hearing, but we could make it a little bit more than that. Just just brainstorming here.
We're gonna try to not do it on the official January snowstorm day and try to do it.
I can't think of any events right after New Year's Day.
Whatever, it's not like the sixteen or seventeen.
But that'd be, yeah, like two weeks after, right? It's usually around two.
Do you do you think uh more people would attend uh from the community during the week of first of January because? People still be taking vacation from work? They have more availability?
I'm trying to remember how it went last year with the um East Village, no, not East Village, the uh entire factory proposal. I think people were. Not. A fan. Of the first week of January right after the holidays. Do you guys remember the feedback on?
But but I but I, that's true, but I would also say you've already identified, I think. The. The stress of this is about a hundred percent less. So I don't know that. You've already identified that's true so far. In other words, these these are plans versus an imminence. Actions, so to speak, so. I would, I would go back and just defer to whatever the schedule works. I don't know that any dates are. Other than getting too close, because since it isn't at first, since that is at first, you know, on Monday, that is a holiday. So I think if you are chairs ready for moving to Wednesday, I think. Anytime later is probably fine.
We have time to think also about it. We'll have our December. And what what's more pressing is if if we. If we decided to kind of. Not add a fifteenth. So take. That out of November and then afford us a little bit more time to do youth engagement. And engagement with commissioners and do writing a little bit early. We're really looking at that finish line the next two months, just figuring out what our next few weeks.
That's probably a good idea. I would almost say the town council people would probably be more for that, just in the sense of. Getting the writing done, the meetings are gonna happen. I would I would say go to the right, because because the other thing that's gonna happen is the town council may come back and want some edits.
Yeah, and and that's that process. I mean, the draft is one thing, it's gonna take a lot of, obviously, two weeks to do that. I believe every bit of that, but the there will be a lot of edits and. Continued engagement after the fact.
I think we'll have, I think I'll. I'm well, if I had that money. We'll probably do some kind of collaboration, we both artists and then work on editing it, but having a text that feels more. We're getting there.
How come on the um change of subject sort of, but on the um Scottsville website, how come like? Planning commission and town council meetings aren't on there?
Future ones? Because I need to update that.
Oh, okay.
I was a month ahead and then uh the month caught up behind me for those.
We've been pretty much the same schedule. You can like just build that out, just sit down. You know, Melanie, you know the schedule. You could lay out, help lay out the D's. Just wondering, okay.
Okay, um if we can keep rolling, um re- report text discussion, so uh. Last meeting, we talked about how we're gonna go about uh updating some of the texts, for instance, box stories. There's quite a few box stories in the existing comp plan. And one I have on the screen is, for instance, Victory Hall. So I took the existing texts and I made some uh updates, uh some of it's grammatical, some of it's regarding flow. Um but perhaps the most important is. In all of these um text boxes, there's there's a little bit of recommendation woven in there. And sometimes it's hidden at the front, sometimes it's hidden at the 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 back or bottom. But what I've done on all of these, I've I've moved the recommendation to the very bottom and and put it in bullet point form. So the recommendation here are the goals for Victory Hall, um as they have been, is restore the downstairs of the building to a close. Facsimile of its original form and function. Number two, modernize the theater to accommodate appearances by visiting professional entertainers. So. What I'm proposing, because there's a lot of these box stories, um and what I've done is I've emailed this text to uh. Um Nancy Gill. Uh Stevie and Lisa. Uh to take kind of a look at this, and I I've highlighted two questions in in comment bubbles. One is. Is the James River Arts Council Council still active? I haven't heard about that throughout our process. And number two. The text mentions Victory Hall Theater Committee was formed to faci- facilitate fundraising. And restoration efforts, is is this still active? Because I I fear that some of this information in the existing comp plan document has just been copied year after year after year and. No one's maybe taken a look at it. Since, you know, ten or fifteen years. So this is just what I'm gonna propose to move forward on bits and pieces. This is. I think much easier than looking at a seventy-page document, it's just looking at a three-quarters of page document and just asking people that. I think know a little bit about Victory Hall uh to to chime in. Would this be a a good process? Great, so um yeah, I I emailed this out uh earlier this evening to uh, you know, Lisa. Uh Nancy and and Stevie, so uh we'll see how this one goes and then I'll I'll farm out the rest of the the text boxes soon. And I I turned on track changes as we discussed last meeting, so if anyone goes in with a link and uh just makes a few edits, we'll we'll all be able to see it. So that's just an example on one text box. I I already have um. The uh. The uh. The Packet Boat uh Park uh. Sorry, my brain is starting to glaze over.
Now Basin Square.
Now Basin Square, yes. I already have that text, that that text was a little bit more raw, so I did some more uh grammatical and flow updates on that, so I'm I'm I'm. Gonna get ready to send that out pretty soon too, so those these will be the first couple ones that go out, so we can chip away at at the document, yeah. Okay, um from here, I propose we go back a little bit to talk about um. This slide. Comprehensiveness of planning. Process, um this is what I I just copied from that presentation, but basically looking at the. The actual uh weaving approach, we've got the principles and we've got the goals. So as we we spoke earlier, we've done a little bit of wordsmithing on the titles for these principles and the and also on the goals. But this is kind of the consensus of what's being heard. So principle one, retaining small-town character. We we basically added the phrase small town, and I think Mr. Holt, for instance, was a a big advocate of that during one of our discussions. Um we had a retaining uh character workshop, but then we had uh the workshop after that was fostering stewardship. So a lot of those folks at fostering stewardship had thoughts on retaining character, um because they're sort of interrelated. So fostering stewardship, like Javier mentioned earlier today, it's more than just the environment, it's about town assets, and we'll write about that. Uh enabling growth, uh as we mentioned, it's. You know, more about specific locations, specific types of growth. Um and this. This diagram is is really meant to be a a tool in the future because. Right now, the town and the staff cannot anticipate what challenges or development proposals are gonna come forward in the future. But this is sort of like a checkbox system. You know, if you you can go through it and say, goal number one, if if this development proposal, does it? Does it retain small-town character? Does it foster stewardship and does it? Not hinder growth, for instance. Um so that's that's what I'm kind of proposing with this weaving approach. So in the comp plan, um. We already have as strategies and goals, that's that's the old process. So we basically removed those strategies and goals as we as we talked, there's four areas. It's something like twelve. Twelve different strategies, thirty-four goals and a a hundred and fourteen something on uh. Things that under that, so it's really complicated. So we try to simplify things. So we just basically have maybe two or three pages of overview explaining what this this weaving approach is. Then we'd have an individual page or pair of pages on each principle and an individual pair of pages on each goal. So it'd be quite. Straightforward and succinct, simple. If if this is generally okay, um and again, I haven't really heard any uh negative aspects about this. This would be great to kind of move forward on, because this is really the 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 biggest piece of the compound that we had to really write from scratch. Uh a lot of the other pieces are really just updating existing text, yeah. So any any thoughts on on this diagram right now?
Well. No, I don't, I was just breathing. I mean, conceptually, I love it. I think it's a great idea. Um and I think the community will appreciate it also. But do we think that this is? Useful for, you know, future developers and future business owners? Is there? A way that they'll be able to extract the information that they need without reading the whole document? Granted, the document will be much more. Accessible or as late. Than the previous documents, but the advantage of the other document is somebody could say, okay, well, here it is, tourism, let me see page fifteen. Oh, great, this is everything that they needed to know. What are what are your thoughts on that?
Well, I think. Basically, each. Section, so there'll be, uh let me just. Clear off what I just wrote. So there'll be the overview. And then there'll be, you know. Pages or spreads on each one of these. And then um. You know. Basically. We'll have to have an example of how how this decision making process really relates. So for instance, if there's. A proposal that. Requires a lot of infrastructure being built, for instance, on Highway twenty. Uh that, let's say, um. Housing development. In the northeast of town. That really affects Hardware Street, the intersection of Hardware and Valley Street. So that has a lot to do with infrastructure. So how can, when this infrastructure comes up at Hardware and Valley Street? How can we make sure that it retains small-town character? It protects the environment and any other assets. There aren't really any particular assets in that part of town, but it's really a lot of natural environment. It's. Right across the street from the bamboo and so on and so forth. And how can that infrastructure really en- en- enable growth? Um which uh in improvement of hardware and Valley Street really would enable growth and it's really critical there. So I think there, um what we can do, uh maybe for the December planning commission meeting. Since we're not gonna have a a community. I can actually start to write out an example, a few sheets of this, and we could talk through it and and we can talk through, is this clear? Is this the right way to explain it? And it would be easy for people to read and also to use. Would would that be helpful? Okay. Then I will, I will put that on the agenda for December, uh is it December fourth, yeah. Because I think this is, in my opinion, uh quite an innovative approach, but we have to be careful that we explain it clearly. And it's easily usable in the future. So I think this will be the litmus test uh on December fourth. And we can show you, and we can talk more.
Thank you.
Okay, um so just gonna skip forward now. We already talked about the schedule, uh we talked about the the draft text. Also, just to add on this, you know, these are separate word documents, easy to manage, um once. For instance, Victory Hall, we have everyone's input that wants to provide input. You know, uh for instance, Nancy's uh Stevie and and Lisa, or if anyone else was to chime in, just let me know. But I'll then take this document, copy the text into our master uh work comp plan working document. And I'll put this in an archive folder, so we'll always have it somewhere in case we need to refer back to it, but it's it's a process of. Updating this text and putting it in our master document. So it should be quite efficient. Okay, so next steps, um. Planning commission meetings, December fourth, and uh I will, I will change this to tentatively January. Third, and we can talk more in the future. And uh I'll work with uh. Shannon uh about Boys and Girls Club and uh the P T O at Scottsville Elementary to have that engagement. I'm really personally excited about that. Um and. I'll uh prepare a few slides for the town council work session uh for next week. I also heard that I should add farmer's market and um sports field engagement or sports teams engagement to our engagement li- list. And I'll add the uh the Buckingham uh County Land somewhere that the in the. Comp plan as a mention as an asset for for the town.
You probably couldn't find some of that written before to one of, maybe you have the previous documents.
Okay, I'll do a, I'll do a word search, yeah. Great, it Javier, anything I I skipped over?
No, I I think we've covered everything. We discussed our timetable and then. I think we would want to take it off to you now to also ask any other questions that come to mind. Yeah, I I don't have anything to add, Lincoln.
Lincoln, there's one thing I was gonna ask you and I, just a quickie, we were. When I was recently in. Morgantown, West Virginia, I had a chance to talk to the mayor, the former mayor there, and when I was chatting with him. One of the things Javier and I were talking about this before the meeting. They were dealing with an issue in their town where they had different sections of the city. It's much bigger than obviously than here, but. Represented those sections of of the of the town where the city were represented in various meetings. And are we too small where we would do that? Is it too small to think that we would wanna have? I mean, obviously, as a town, we're representing uptown or downtown or the different areas, but. Is it wise in the long run to consider? People that actually from those areas who advocate more specifically that way, or is that not, since we're so small?
Well, well, um. I think that's a really good question, and that's really what our yellow sticker exercise tried to get at. Uh maybe Javier. If it's handy, could you show Dan the yellow sticker exercise for at the town scale? Um it's over there on the. Foam core board, but. What we did at Walkability, the first exercise was, we asked people to put stickers where they're they're living, and we got a really good uh distribution. And I think that was important. We we didn't want only people from downtown coming and talking about. Walkability, because they'd only talk about downtown, right? But we got a diverse representation and uh. That also kind of reminds me that, you know, we've been talking about how to designate, what what does uptown really mean? What does downtown mean? What does this new river? Riverside area or Eastern Corridor in Fluvana side, uh what does that mean? I think it's 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 wise to have identity of different neighborhoods in town. I think it's, it's, it's wise to have identity of different neighborhoods in town, um because once you start having identity, uh. Then you can have more intimate conversations about it, yeah.
Yeah, well, that that's the thing, I I this, this, the dots are. Are good to see where people came from, but it's, again, it's identifying that, and I don't think it'll take too much time, cause we're at the end of the meeting here, but it's. It is an interesting question to think. Do we? Want to work forward in the future where we have almost a a an ability to make sure that. The Paulette Town people, where where our chairs from, or or different areas. Feel their area is. Is represented or or when there's a time of need, that that area gives special consideration, because that's where a certain thing is happening, so. It just, I think it's, it's an interesting thought.
I think talking it through with you during this and the last meeting. The advantage of that is that. You know, when you see it in other places, it's so that neighborhoods don't get hidden in processes like comprehensive plans. So they have a a committee that comes together to say, hey, these are our priorities. Cause I think sometimes that gets lost when people are thinking about different regions, for example, a city. And I could see different priorities depending on what neighborhood you live in in town, uh. Off the top of my head, I'm just worried about being able to get a cohort like that. Rather than carefully trying to holistically grab every little piece we get. From conversations you guys have as planning commissioners or town council. Or somebody who calls Melanie or I, um.
Yeah, I don't wanna create something that's unworkable, but it it does ask a question, and it's worth thinking about in the long run, you know, what are the? Five sections, we would identify are the eight sections or whatever they are, but it does give us a frame of reference to say. If you're in Ward Eight, so to speak, we want to make sure that everybody in Ward Eight is notified that X is happening. Or that this potential is so that you come in to address that issue, cause you're there, and so we don't miss you. And the other thing about it is, like you said, is. We might think all the development's been happening everywhere else, and we forgot about Ward Eight, so to speak, and we'd wanna make sure that. It they get a piece of the pie.
In an anecdotal way, I know you 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 are hitting a button on something, right? Because I have, as town administrator, heard that. Those on. Uh Main Street feel like they're not heard as much as Valley Street. In a variety of ways, and I'm seeing you nodding, so you've heard it.
Funny, because I've heard that same thing, and there's, and it's a pretty hot issue for the people on Main Street, so.
And I, and I I take it as uh, I think it's a valid understanding.
Yeah.
Uh I can see from. Twenty probably adds to that a little bit, um but it's, it's it's to say to the point, it's like, you know. We do have our different areas in town, even though Scottsville, we think of it as very small.
Well, let's, we'll, we'll come back again later in the meeting here, but we can have a convers- a lot more conversations in the future about. How do we make our people? And one size on, you know, that they're equally represented for the rest of the town, or that they're not forgotten, and their special needs are taken care of.
And I think it has to do with communication also. We we've learned. Through this process that. You know, communication nowadays in towns is a little bit fragmented, you know, people have. Social media, they have uh sometimes newspapers, uh their blogs now. And we did have trouble getting the word out about our events, and as Javier, you mentioned, for the. Business Roundtable, you just had to go talk to people individually, right? They just didn't check their emails, um. So maybe if if the town is thinking about a a communication strategy. It could factor into these neighborhood strategies, so if if there's something happening. Over on Main Street towards Flavana. There could be a listserv or a mailing list or something that could target those folks. Uh just, just one idea. This is that this bigger question of neighborhoods can be linked with communication.
Interesting. I I think this is, we should retouch on this issue. Because I think there are a lot of uh ideas about communication in there, so.
Yeah, we heard about communication at a lot of our engagement events, um. Yeah. Very broad ranging. Comments about engagement, um. For instance, uh Kim Highland, the housing uh lady. She saw our. Housing focus group advertised somewhere. But then when her husband went back the next day to look for the details of where, what time it was, where it was, they couldn't find any information. Uh it had been deleted from someone's Facebook page or something. So uh even though she was really wanting to come to the event, they had trouble finding information, so um, yeah, I think it has to do with. Wider communication, and 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 again, I I mentioned this, that Scottsville's not alone, you know. Many communities, especially in rural areas, are having trouble with. Communication, yeah. Just some thoughts, yeah.
Well, thank you, Lincoln, for all your information.
Yep. Great, okay.
Thank you, sir, excellent.
Okay. Well, I am at the architecture building, I will uh head out once, once the meeting ends, yeah.
Art Sector Building, number ninety-eight.
So here at school.
New business?
I could know new business on the agenda, cause I expected.
I'm gonna be fast, I have a couple of just. Questions, minutes.
Minutes, um trying to catch up on the work with Melanie, so I'll discuss with Melanie about trying next week. Uh to at least catch up on these minutes. And then work backwards.
Thank you. Um. I got an email from the county that there's this new ride share program that's being rolled out, it's like. Sort of like an Uber, but it's free, and I don't think it's just a regular person driving you. Ride share, I think it's actually. Like an Uber service, but it's free. But it's only on the twenty-nine North corridor and Handtoss, so. It may not affect us. But it's. If they can do it there, is that something that we can have rolled out here? I'm just, um, you know, continually thinking about getting cars off the road, carpooling, making trans. Um transit safer, providing transit options, which we have very few of, so I just wonder. It's something to keep in mind at least. That this new service is available and maybe there's a way that we can get in on it somehow.
Yes, so I remember discussions about this, it's kind of that hybrid method. You know, so you, it doesn't all have to be always your traditional bus. I mean, let me reach out and maybe I'll send you an email once I get a little bit more information. My gut feeling is that it's gonna be, I was trying to justify how much ridership we have, it's almost always that's the metric they use. Uh. But let me reach back out to you. Maybe just showing our work on that.
I guess the hard part is. Like. We all know everyone needs to take twenty to get to Charlottesville, but then once you get to Avon Street Extended, then what? What do you do with people? Like, you can't just. Disperse the ride share everywhere in in the community, but so it would make it hard for us.
We'll have to see what they do in twenty-nine corridor, cause I feel like that's also the same question they might have.
Okay, so they they probably will drop you off outside of the twenty-nine corridor, it's not like they just. Dump you at the end of twenty-nine and.
Hopefully not.
I have, I have quite a lot of experience with the Microcat already, uh it started uh last Monday. I believe it was, um.
A Microcat, yes, that's the term.
So uh I I heard about it through uh Sean Tubbs uh Community Engagement Newsletter, but I also heard about it from the County Newsletter. And I live in in the the twenty-nine area that they service, so I got really excited, so I. Tried to use Microcat the first day to get from my apartment near Rye Road to Fashion Square Mall, so I could, I could take the. The shuttle or the the bus to uh Berwick's Road. They had a lot of software application problems, I had to call uh. Four times uh because the app wasn't working. And uh I think they're having some teething issues. But it's basically a a minivan that has uh four seats in it and a wheelchair area. So it's really a last mile connectivity. So for instance, it's, it's really challenging to get from uh north of. Northeast of Rye Road to Fashion Square Mall, that's a lot of coverage. So uh I think that's really the purpose, um to connect with the big, big cat bus. But I think it's worth exploring, I think the county got one point four million dollars to run that that it, that uh program for a year.
But I know I dig into it and then email you guys back, I'm curious about it too.
And and. I I feel like I remember reading something about a ride share program in the county at some point in time, you'll be. Okay, so it is the county. So.
Yeah.
Very much.
Why don't I reach out to the county and then reply back a little bit?
Thank you. Sounds good, thank you. Um the next, the next comment is just to let folks know that here, uh Health Equity in Rural. Realities, I don't remember the full acronym, is hosting a Take a Hype Day. Actually, there's two days, one day in Scottsville on November eighteenth, starting in the Scanland, and then uh in Esmont on. I think November seventh, or day four. And that's it, that's all I got. Anyone else? I'm not sure I'm even here still. I'm gonna need to go. I am, yeah, physically, but really. Wanna make a motion of that? Oh, I don't know, is it time? Do you wanna say or do you want to? I'd like to make a motion. But that will be adjourned this meeting.
Second.
All right.
Thank you, Lincoln, have a good night.
Lincoln.
Night, night.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Oh, yes.
Thanksgiving, oh, well, yeah.
Yeah, cause we won't see you till next month. I know, I thought also, like, that's so far.